Okay. Good evening, everyone. It's 5:00. And I'm going to call to order the City Council's special meeting of October 30th, and the first order of business is to stand and join me in the pledge to the flag.
(Inaudible) United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Administrator, roll call, please.
Yes. Councilmember Hawkins is absent. Councilmember Plummer?
Here.
Councilmember Garaventa?
Here.
Councilmember Segarini?
Here.
Mayor Williams?
Here.
Chief VanderWiel?
Here.
Chief New?
Here.
Community Development Director Kellogg?
Here.
And Jennifer Callaway, Administrative Services Director, is absent. Obviously, the City Administrator is here, and with me tonight is Deputy City Attorney Robinborough. And we do have a quorum.
And also, we have Paula here this evening.
Yes. Well, she'll be introduced later as our special guest.
All right. Just want to make sure everybody's covered. All right. The City Administrator's report on agenda posting.
Agenda was posted at 5:00 PM on the 26th of October.
Okay. Item C is approval of agenda. Is there anything that needs to be changed, added, or deleted? No? Any public comments? And I'll bring it back to the council, and we'll move on to public forum. The public may address the City Council on any item of public interest not otherwise on the agenda that is within the jurisdiction of the City Council. No action may be taken. Matters to be addressed may be referred to City staff or placed on a subsequent meeting agenda. Speakers are limited to five minutes. Is there anyone who would like to address the council on a non-agenda item? Okay. Yes? Do we have one?
I'm questioning whether this is non-agenda discussion.
This time? The, that, no, that is not a non-agenda item. The agenda item is, is the mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring plan for the Washington Street Red Church. There will be public comment, yes?
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. I will ask for public comment, yes. Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to unfinished business, which this evening we have none. So we'll move on to the item for discussion for tonight, which is new business, is the consideration to adopt Resolution Number 10-30-2017-A, adopting the mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring plan for the Washington Street Red Church pedestrian and circulation improvement project, which is part of the Vision Sonora Plan. Staff report, please.
So before we go into more of the CEQA analysis that was completed as part of the mitigated neg-dec, I'll give a little background on the project just for the council and the public. So the Washington Street Red Church pedestrian traffic improvement project was included in the Vision Sonora Plan, which was adopted by the City Council in 2013. The project is located at the intersection of Snell and North Washington Street and Highway 49. The intersection today, based on what was in the plan, is a geometrically non-standard constraint and is of a safety concern for that area. The non-standard layout and restricted site distances at the crossing has made it unsafe, and that's what they identified in the plan at the time. So, as I said, that was included in the plan, the Vision Sonora Plan. In anticipation of funding in 2014, the city was eligible for CMAC funding, the congestion mitigate, congestion, let me find it here, the federal congestion mitigation and quality improvement program funding. The city actually received funding authorization for the, for this project back then. However, the air improved in the county, which is a good thing, but in that happening, the county was no longer eligible for CMAC projects, and so the funding was lost for the project. And then, in 2017, the City Council authorized staff to submit a grant application under the Active Transportation Improvement Program through Caltrans and the California Transportation Commission for the project, again, same project. And they, we were not, we did not receive funds as well under that, but we did score very high. I wanted to go back one quick second. Conceptual plan and scoping document that was prepared in anticipation of any funding, that was prepared, the Topeka County Transportation Council provided the funding to have that done for this project. And that was done by Kimberly Horton Associates, who are an engineering firm, and it include the, they designed the conceptual plan that you guys had in the Vision Sonora Plan that was, and they refined it somewhat out through the scoping plan. And that included the, both the conceptual plan as well as some engineers' estimates of cost for the project to allow us to include that within the grant applications. So, we didn't get, as I said, we did not get the Active Transportation Improvement funding. However, with the passage of Senate Bill Number 1, the ATP program received $100 million additional funding a year, and they were able to look at other projects to add into the funding pool. And so, the city was applied under the ATP augmentation, and we were, did receive funding authorization and approval for this project. In order to, in order to get funding under the ATP augmentation, however, we had to see, they wanted to see projects that were basically shovel-ready, which meant that the environmental documents were prepared and ready to go on the projects. So, we, again, with the help of the Topeka County Transportation Council, we were able to get funding in place so that we could complete the environmental document, which is what you have before you tonight. So, under the ATP program, there's phases for projects to move through. The first one under the ATP is the environmental review, and that has to be completed before any preliminary engineering or design can be done for the project. Once the preliminary engineering and design can be completed, or is completed, we can proceed with final design for the project, and then after that, following that, you would go into the construction phase. But all of that has to occur before construction can be authorized for the project. So, we have, they have allocated for this project $722,000 through the California Transportation Council. There is the, and they also have already, that occurred in October. We can request the funding in December to start the project for the preliminary engineering and design, and need to have that completed by May of 2019 in order to move forward with authorization for construction. So, that gives us, if they approve, the, if the M&amp;D is approved tonight, and the mitigation monitoring plan, then we can submit the documents. It will be considered for authorization for your preliminary engineering and final design at the December meeting of the CTC, and then we can move forward with, if we're approved, we can move forward with that phase. The phase of preliminary engineering and final design includes contracting with an engineering design consultant, who would work with the city, Caltrans, other agencies, property owners, and the public to redesign the intersection. Again, the, the design that was included within the environmental document is a conceptual plan, and again, that was put together by Kimberly Horton Associates, which are traffic engineers, and they did provide some comments for us tonight, and Paula will go through that. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop right there. Paula is going to go over the CEQA analysis that was done. I do want to let you know that in front of you is a page that was inadvertently left out of one of the comment letters, and so we have provided you that, and that was from Elena. When the copy machine was pulling them through, it must've grabbed two pages, but in Paula's comments, she did include an itemized list of her comments for you guys, in the staff report as well. So, once Paula's done, I'll remind you what we're considering tonight, and go over the resolution a little bit, and then we'll move forward with your questions and, Paula. So, this is Paula Danilic. Paula is the contract planner for the city. She's with Development Impact, and she prepared the CEQA document.
Thank you, Rochelle. Okay, so, in your packets before you tonight, we did go through the CEQA review just to go over the framework of it, and then I'll get into some of the meat of this project in particular. As you know, CEQA must be done on any project coming forward in the state of California. We did the analysis on the conceptual plan, and that went out for public review between September 20th and October 20th. It also was distributed through OPR to all the state agencies, and that public comment period closed, with 16 comments being received. We did put a summary of those comment letters, as well as the original letters, in your packets for your review. I do want to note that on mitigated negative declarations, such as what you are considering tonight, you are not required by CEQA to respond to comments, but we did provide response to comments to assist in your analysis and your consideration of the document tonight. And furthermore, the comment letters that we received, we didn't really put them in any specific order, they're just listed as what we received. I do want to bring attention to you, though, that we did not receive a comment letter at all from Caltrans, and that is something to note since it is there right away, and that means that they reviewed it, they were specifically noted in the State Clearing House distribution for review. And I know there's been some comments, kind of thematically through the letters that we received, that dealt with traffic and traffic safety, and so I wanted to particularly note that Caltrans has reviewed the document and did not have any additional comments with it, and was satisfied with the analysis provided in the document. So, as you looked through your packet, you would see that there are some themes that kind of came up in the comment letters that we received. So, we responded to them for you in a format that was kind of a master response, and instead of addressing line item by line item, it's more the theme of what the questions were pertaining to. And in coordination with Kimberly Horton, who are traffic engineers, the master responses were coordinated between both of our firms, and their memo associated with that was included in your packet as well. So you'll see there is a little double over in that, we brought that forward into your staff report. So, the first one that I want to bring to your attention is the issue of the proposed geometric changes to the intersection itself, and the impacts of the vehicle movements going through the intersection on the concept plan. One of the things that was brought up through the comment letters was dealing with the size of vehicles that would make the turns. And Kimberly Horton's traffic engineers did confirm that the concept plan was drawn with the ability to accommodate the larger vehicles, in particular, the standard 40-foot school bus size would be able to go through those areas. And as Rochelle mentioned earlier, when you move into the final design stages, when they're actually really putting down where all of the geometry will specifically be and drawing up those final plans, those templates and things like that will be approved and will be coordinated through Caltrans Engineering as well, since you will require, be required to give an encroachment permit from Caltrans, it is there right away. So that is put in there. There will also be movements for the pedestrians and the safety of that, and that's all related to the bulbout and the shortening of those crosswalks. So, another one of the comments that we received was the pedestrian safety and the traffic in itself, what that would be. It's important to note, from an environmental standpoint and from a traffic standpoint, you're not changing the capacity of that roadway or that intersection when it comes to traffic and vehicular traffic in particular. We're not adding lanes, we're not removing lanes, the turning movements that currently are there will remain there. So, from the standpoint of doing a traffic study, there is no quantitative analysis that you would do because you're not allocating any additional traffic counts to that roadway than what is already there. So your level of service will not change from a quantitative standpoint in that. The third master response deals with the overall safety improvements for the intersection. Pedestrian safety was one of the main things that were looked at when they designed the intersection, and in looking at that from the environmental standpoint. The bulbouts would provide pedestrian waiting areas, which are further into the roadway, which allows vehicles to see that pedestrians are there, ready to cross the roadway, and encourages vehicles to yield to them in the right of way. The bulbouts also provide for a slowing of traffic so that they can see things and react to people, which lowers fatality and injury accidents, particularly for the pedestrians. And then the distance of the crosswalks themselves will be reduced to smaller lengths, and that reduces the exposure of being in the right of way itself and in that roadway from being a safety concern. When you talk about having the geometry of the intersection to form the turn movements and take care of the skew of that intersection, you're talking about things reducing the speed of traffic and slowing and controlling the turn movements by squaring up the intersection, particularly there on Snell Street, and these are all things that provide for better sight distance, as well as the ability for the various vehicles, drivers, to know the direction and who's coming, who has the right of way. Again, like I mentioned a minute ago, because of the level of services, the analysis that we use in CEQA, that there is no change in that level of service due to the crosswalk distancing for pedestrians, and you also will be getting a smaller conflict zone with the proposed concept versus what we have on the document now. So, having gone through the master responses in your packet, I'd be happy to answer any questions anybody has, but we did lay out an analysis of each of the comment letters for you. There were not any comments that were received that would point quantitatively to a significant adverse impact to the environment, nor raised a new environmental issue that wasn't already analyzed in the document itself and in the analysis, and therefore, it didn't require additional work to the M&amp;D. So we are not suggesting any changes to the document to you tonight. The last comment issue area that, sorry, scanning through, that was raised that I wanted to bring to your attention, was there was a few comments that questioned whether the entire Vision Sonora Plan should have been analyzed from a CEQA standpoint, and that was not a document that would require CEQA analysis. It fell under the exemption for feasibility and planning studies, and so the overall plan did not need to be analyzed on a CEQA basis, nor does the funding of this specific project trigger an analysis of the overall plan. You're only required by CEQA to analyze the project that you're funded and moving forward with. So that's the focus of this environmental document that is before you tonight for consideration. Other than that, also in your packet was a mitigated negative, I'm sorry, mitigation monitoring and reporting program, which summarizes those mitigation measures that are in the document, as well as who's responsible for the implementation of them, and that would be something that would be recorded and then implemented once the project is underway via the staff. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So, before we do that, I just want to remind everybody, so, this is the staff recommendation, and I wanted to go over that so we're real clear on what we're considering. The staff is recommending approval of Resolution Number 10-30-2017-A, which is before you, and it does adopt the mitigated negative declaration and the mitigation monitoring and reporting program, which is attached, is an attachment to the resolution, with the appropriate findings that the City Council needs to make to do the adoption for the CEQA document. So that is in your packet as part of the resolution. Again, I wanted to remind you that this is, the, everything within, that you saw within the M&amp;D is a conceptual plan. Once this is adopted, if it's adopted tonight, it will be submitted to the California Transportation Commission for their meeting for December, at which they will be considering authorization with funding to move forward for the preliminary design, the final design. We need to have that completed by May of 2019 in order to get our funding authorization to construct the project. Within six months after getting funding authorization for construction, we have to be under contract. We would go out with an RFP for the engineering, preliminary engineering and design, and select a engineering and traffic firm, a traffic engineering firm to prepare the preliminary design and the final design. There would be, there will be opportunity for the public to review the preliminary designs, as well as comment. As it goes through the process, the final design would be approved by the City Council. So I wanted to make that real clear of what we're approving tonight, and we are available for any questions.
Okay. One more time, I'm going to ask you for the timeline. Something has to be completed by May?
We have to be completed with the preliminary engineering and final design by May of 2019, at which we will go before the, once it is completed, then we will submit authorization for construction to the California Transportation Commission. I think I called it a council a little bit ago because I was talking about the TCTC, but, yeah, the commission, and then authorized to, then at that point, we'd ask for the funding for construction. They've authorized $722,000. They've set that aside for this project. That's including your preliminary engineer, final design, and your construction, and the, and the costs associated with the encroachment permit in the right of way section. So that is all included in that funding.
So 2019, not 2018?
2019, by May of 2019. So, we'll have 18 months to complete the preliminary engineering and final design before we request construction money.
And what timeline for construction?
We have to be under contract within six months and completed within three years.
Six months from May?
May, well, we'll probably get approval in June, so six months, so by December, we have to be under contract for construction, and then we have to be completed within three years, the construction project. But again, before we request authorization, the final design, and we have to go through all that process, have plenty of opportunity for public comment, and you guys would adopt and approve the final design before we went back for funding for construction.
All right. Other questions or comments by the council or staff?
So, to make it clear, design comes in the future. So if we decide on a different design or decide not to do it, that's a future decision. We're not being forced to do a project by passing the negative declaration and doing this tonight.
Once we completed the preliminary engineering and design, we're going to need to move forward with construction.
Sure. That, that part I understand. What I'm asking is, are we, in effect, approving the project tonight by passing this resolution, or is there still time to, if we wanted to say, not do the project?
Once we request the funding and we go out with an RFP, and we start down the road of preliminary engineering and final design, then, once that's completed, the city should move forward with construction, because the funding has been provided for the preliminary engineering and design. Now, it can take a different format, that's not, it can, the design can change, it can be accommodating if there's something they find in the field that needs to be modified, if the landscape area needs to be smaller, it needs to shift, if the pedestrians, pedestrians need to be adjusted, all of that, bulbouts need to be adjusted, but the final project has to meet the goals that were approved, which is to improve circulation and pedestrian safety in those areas. It can take a different form, but it has to meet those goals.
So, so we're talking about two separate things a little bit. The environmental document that is before you tonight is before you because of CEQA, because there's a project that you are considering funding for, and you cannot move forward with that funding request without the CEQA clearance on that project. So, the CEQA document before you tonight is here from that standpoint of being a CEQA review of a possible project the city is considering. Certifying the CEQA document allows you the opportunity to meet the deadline of the funding that is provided for you, that will access the $700,000 available to the city for funding. It doesn't have anything to do with saying you have to move forward in any other way. All it's saying is that you have looked at the environmental impacts of this conceptual plan, of this project that is before you, and you agree with the, the analysis has been adequately done, and you are certifying the document that says that.
Okay. That's where I was going.
Other questions or comments for staff by the council? Go ahead. Pull your mic close. You know, before we do that, since Councilmember Hawkins isn't here, and we have a mic that doesn't work.
It's been requested, and this is more a curiosity question, that we drop everything and forget all about Vision Sonora until we were, would complete an entire environmental impact assessment for the entire project. In wild-ass figures...
What would that likely cost?
If you, if you were to do that, you wouldn't be required by law to do it. So, first of all, it's somewhat irrelevant to, to even throw numbers at that, because you're not required to do an EIR unless there's a significant impact that's been determined. And with this particular project, that didn't happen. And with this particular project, that didn't happen. With the entire Vision Sonora Plan, as I mentioned earlier, that's a feasibility and planning study, and you don't have to do environmental analysis, exempt from CEQA. Having said that, if you want to talk about what the figures are from just random EIRs, they can range anywhere from, you know, 125,000 to 300,000, depending on what you're analyzing and the level of detail that's necessary.
Thank you very much. That was sort of the answer I expected, but I had no idea of the sums involved. Okay, secondly, I'm making a presumption here, but I'd like an answer, and that is, if we decide that the criticism rises to the level that we just don't even want to deal with this at this point, we want to, or we choose to reject the, what is it, the mitigated negative declaration, then it's, we snooze, we lose, the money will be gone for forever and go to San Jose, or San Diego, or some other place, correct?
If we decide to not move forward with the project, we would submit a letter saying that we're not going to move forward, and yes, the funding would be gone.
Yep, okay.
Probably, I would imagine, probably funding for a lot of things is down the river, because they probably wouldn't be real happy with the city with them.
Thank you.
Paula, a couple of questions. The fact that we didn't get any comment at all from Caltrans, is that typical when they're looking at a project like this?
It's only typical if Caltrans has no issue with it. Caltrans tends to be very succinct when they have comments that they want addressed, and usually will give you quite a long list of issue areas and specific items in a report that they want to see, and to some degree, will even scope a report and their comment letters to you. But in this case, like I said, we received nothing from them.
The Vision Sonora Plan as a whole was reviewed by Caltrans at the time the plan was adoption, adopted, including the different projects that were identified. Also, as part of the ATP application, it's actually submitted to them. If they have any concerns or comments, because it's on the right-of-way, then they can do address it at that time. They didn't have any concerns, nor did they have any concerns when it was submitted through the augmentation program.
Did I miss something on, on the letters that we got? Almost all of them never commented on the fact that this was going to be harmful to the environment, the project. Was I correct in assuming from what I read?
We did not find any additional areas that had not already been analyzed from an environmental issue standpoint in the comment letters.
Other questions, comments for staff?
Well, yes, actually. For the safety issue. The crosswalk on the east side, Washington Crossing Elkin, that essentially stays the same, and in my experience, is a deadly crosswalk. Is there anything that can be done as we, if, I presume, go forward looking at other alternatives and ways to make it safer, short of shutting down Elkin? Because it, people, people don't see you from both directions. Coming south, people are looking south and turn without paying any attention to what's on their right. And then, one of my neighbors was run over just recently, coming in the other direction by somebody turning, heading south, turning east. And so it's, it's a dangerous spot, and this doesn't seem to do anything for that particular issue.
It is one of the more constrained areas in the project area, and they will look at that and determine, that is a narrow sidewalk on the other side as well, and it's a real restricted area. So whether or not to continue that crosswalk there is a question that they'll have to look at as part of the plan, because they might not be able to accommodate a crossing that is safe enough at that one location and redirect pedestrians to the other crosswalks that are created through the plan. But that will be analyzed by the traffic engineer.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments by the council? I have one question. During the design phase, the final design phase, who will be involved in that? And will that include Caltrans, since it's part of Highway 49?
So we'll have to go through a right-of-way approachment process with Caltrans, or the consultant will be working with them. Caltrans will be consulted all along the way, and they will also approve the final design, as well as the council. Yeah, Caltrans will be intimately involved in the processes as we go through.
That's my only question at the moment. All right. Anything else from staff before we open it up for public comment? Okay, I just want to remind everyone that what we're doing here this evening is, we're not designing the project. We're, we're looking at the possibility of approving the mitigated negative declaration, and that's what we need for you all to comment on. If it has anything to do with, if you have opinions about landscaping, or design, or crosswalks, or whatever, that's not what we're doing here tonight. It's to do with the information that's in the mitigated negative declaration. So I want to just make reference to that, so everybody understands what it is that we're, that we're trying to accomplish here this evening. You all are welcome to make a comment, but just remember that it, we're not here doing a traffic study, this isn't traffic study information, so just.
My phone will be used to see if you want to talk or consider.
I will. And so at this time, how many people would like to comment? Okay, so I've got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, okay? So we'll go ahead and, and even if you didn't raise your hand, if you decide that you want to comment, please, feel free to come up. The other thing is, if somebody mentions, has already expressed whatever it is that you want to express, it's probably not necessary to say it twice, because I think we all get it the first time around. So take that into consideration also. We don't want to leave anybody out, and everybody, we want everybody to have an opportunity. And we'll set the time limit for each one of you at five minutes. So if there's no other questions or comments by the council, and no other staff information, then I'll go ahead and open it up for public comment. Please come up to the podium.
Can you answer a question about how you were framing the comments you want before the comments actually start? I'm confused about that.
Okay.
And I mean, my question is just, is it possible that if a significantly different design were eventually pursued, that that could impact whatever the CEQA process goes down?
It's a fair question, and from a legal perspective, under CEQA, when you have a substantial change to a project, so say you wanted to put an intersection, you know, an intersection or something major, then you'd have to go back and do an environmental review, but the question at that point would be, has there been a substantial change to the design that would warrant?
That answer your question?
Yeah, just because, I mean, you were trying to frame the entire process, I was trying to figure out where we fit into this. If you don't want to talk about design tonight, but there's an opening for design later, but then, if you did that, how does that change it? Thank you, sorry.
So for the audience, this is the document that, that we are considering this evening, just so you all are aware. Okay, all right.
Okay. My name is Gerard J. from Chillicothe, Jerry, most people call me Jerry. I'm appearing here as a resident of Sonora since 1970, and I've been a registered civil engineer in the state of California for 45 years in this local area. And I have reviewed the write-up on this, and I, and the concept plan, that you're, basically you're adopting a concept plan and saying there's no impact of it. And the concept plan that's in this mitigated negative deck, I reviewed as a civil engineer, and I, I disagree with the, with the characterization of this project as, as a improvement to traffic flow, as well as to pedestrian safety. I think that the opposite is true as an engineer. You're, you're basically taking a merged lane from Snell to Washington Street, and you're creating a turn, and a very, a turn as concepted, it's almost impossible for a truck to, a truck or a bus to make that turn and not go into the opposite lane. You're creating a safety hazard. And, and by doing this, you're, you're creating more points of conflict within the intersection, which will degrade safety. You have a new, you're adding a new crosswalk on this thing. Existing four crosswalks, you're adding another one. You're creating new points of conflict on there. The bulbous on the east side of Washington Street also create conflict. They obstruct, somebody wanted to make a right turn onto Elkin Street, it's a nice smooth turn. If you look at the intersection as it is right now, it's the best you can get for this traffic flow and the least amount of conflicts. And I really feel that the write-up on this by their engineers is inadequate, it's an inadequate analysis of the traffic effects on it. So I, in my report, I filed a three-page report, I don't have the time to read it here, but I suggested that you have mitigation measures incorporated in this mitigation negative deck. If you want to pursue a project for safety, those mitigation measures would be to eliminate this large landscaped island, eliminate the new crosswalk, eliminate the bulbous on the east side, turn around this project to the sidewalks, keep, keep the existing merged lane in there, work on the visibility and upgrading of the sidewalks to, to promote safety, visibility. One of the biggest problems there is your, your traffic flow coming into town, everybody's looking at getting off of Washington Street as fast as you can, and, and the driver attention is not there. And the other thing I suggested is you look at more advanced signing to the intersection. If you drive it, you look at, look at it, you, you don't even see these crosswalks until you're almost on them, if you're coming southbound. You need some advanced flasher or something like that to get the driver's attention on it. So I am suggesting that you make significant changes to this. Otherwise, I feel you're, if you follow this concept plan, and an engineered concept plan, I've done them over the years, you look at what the requirements are for truck turns, and look at its safety. The, the analysis here is totally inadequate in the write-up here. Okay, also, cumulatively, this project, combined with all the, the other Sonora Vision projects on Washington Street, Stockton Street, Stewart Street, if you consider those projects on a traffic basis, a safety basis, as all implemented, you're going to bring Sonora to a standstill of traffic and frustration about getting off of Washington Street.
Okay, Jerry, 30 seconds.
Okay, so I think that the mitigation measure for cumulative effects on this is that you ought to be making the Greenlee Road extension as a priority before you implement any one of these, these projects. So, and I hope you get a chance to review my comments.
Just, just for the record, hold on one second. Just for the record, the Greenlee Road extension is not a City of Sonora project. I just want the public to know that. Yes?
Good afternoon. My name is Galen Greitz. I am also a local civil engineer. I have some concerns with this document, specifically some of the same concerns that Jerry had. The traffic section, there is no analysis. There is no data in here. Under the section where it says no impact, it says, "The intersection may slightly improve traffic, thereby improving the level of service." Well, "may slightly improve," that's very subjective, "traffic." This level of service is based on how many vehicles can get through an intersection. And if you purposely slow them down by adding crosswalks and changing the lanes, you are going to reduce, or potentially reduce, the level of service. Also, in the document, under, excuse me, less than significant impacts, it says, "The, the project is intended to improve conditions at the intersection, therefore, the project will create beneficial impacts." Well, the best intentions don't always pave the way to better improvements, and no pun intended. Also, the Caltrans, lack of response from Caltrans is pretty normal. I have been with projects that we get all the way to the Board of Supervisors with projects in the county, and then we get a Caltrans response at the 11th hour. They always cite safety concerns, so it trumps all lack of meeting their deadlines. Also, my experience, they won't even accept a design without a traffic study. So I really think that a traffic study is warranted. The consultant, in his response letter, says that the number and type of vehicular lanes will not be changed, and that is categorically false. The merged lane here at Snell Street changes its character. There are a lot of people that make a right turn on Elkin Street to double back into town. Right now, there's kind of an added, it's almost like a right turn lane there right now. This bulbous right here will eliminate that. So those people will be slowing down traffic in that intersection as well, and that will definitely change your level of service. Thank you.
Hi, my name is David Morgan. I'm a resident in Sonora. Just going back, I think, to Mr. Garavanti's question, if you go ahead and vote on this tonight, and you start the studies, I'm assuming the studies are going to cost $100,000 or $150,000, and then you decide not to do it, do you have to repay that money to, to wherever you're getting the money from? Does anybody know the answer to that question?
Repay the money to Rochelle? Does any staff member want to respond to that? Really and truly, we don't need to respond to any public comment, so why don't we wait till the end?
Do you want to accept to the council and you respond to them?
So, but it's a fair question.
Okay.
Do that need a response?
Please.
So the amount allocated for the preliminary engineering and design feature of the project is $76,000. The rest is designated for construction. If we move forward with the project, the project will, and we spend the preliminary engineering and final design, whatever, whatever that final design is, and that's approved by you guys, Caltrans, with a lot of input, that's what has to be constructed. So if it's less modification, then it's a less modification. If it's more similar to the concept plan, it's more similar to the concept plan. But whatever it is, it's the final that gets approved, it needs to get constructed, or I can't say for sure, but every grant I've ever worked with, you have to move forward through the project, unless, otherwise, you owe me money.
So the $76,000 would come out of the $722,000, correct?
That's correct. That's the amount for preliminary engineering and design.
And if you decide not to go along with it, do you have to pay the $76,000 back?
Yes, if there's no modification, that... If there's no modification that are going to occur. What I'm saying is, it might be not as drastic as a modification. It depends on what comes out of the engineering and the preliminary engineering and design.
So I just want to make sure that when you're voting tonight, you keep on saying you're just voting to keep the process going, but you're actually voting to commit to the process.
I don't see any -- okay.
Hello.
Please.
Hi. Barbara Dressler, Sonora. I also have concerns about how this adds safety hazards rather than mitigates them. Right now, everybody, when it's backed up and they're coming southbound, is taking that turn on Elkin and going down the parallel street there. So it's, I mean, it's de facto, we've got, you know, that is our kind of mini bypass. And that Elkin's corner is extremely unsafe. Also, coming here, looking back here for traffic, having a second crosswalk to check here and then try and merge into traffic and have a crosswalk there, that's a recipe for hitting somebody. Especially lovely here, however, you're putting benches and you're putting landscaping. We don't always keep up with landscaping. That obscures benches, attracts more people into an area where we don't want people, more people, more pedestrians. It's already heavily impacted. So I think those are two traffic safety hazards. Now, my question, and I'm not real clear on it, can you make those sorts of changes in this plan and still meet your deadlines? Is that a -- do we know?
Those are the things that would be taken into consideration when a final plan is being created.
Okay. So we actually don't know what we're voting on tonight, is that correct?
You're not voting, we're not, we are not voting on a plan. We are voting on this CEQA document.
I understand. I'm trying to make the distinction, though. You're voting to have something come out of this project at this point. And it cannot be changed dramatically from what we're looking at here unless we can demonstrate safety hazards or a public interest in having changes made. Is that correct?
I'm going to let staff answer that question because they're the ones that are intimately involved in a lot of design and planning, so.
Thank you.
Rochelle, can you help with that one?
That's not exactly correct. The plan, what the concept of it has to improve pedestrian safety and circulation is what we, the city, has to deliver as part of the project for the funding. So the project can morph during the engineering phase if there's a more appropriate way that's going to make it safer. Or if there's a turning conflict of someone that needs to be adjusted, that can all be addressed during that preliminary engineering and design phase. Or when you're looking at truck movements and where the trucks are going to be able to turn and what the turning movements are, and adjustments can be made to the plan at that time. So what you see there might not be what it ultimately looks at, like as it goes through the engineering and design phase. Some of the Caltrans projects, just to clarify, some Caltrans funding sources, like the Stockton-Washington projects, allows us to do the engineering and the environmental document at the same time, which makes it probably clearer to the public because it all goes through together. This funding source requires the environmental document to be done before you start your design, the engineering design of the project. So it's a little bit more awkward probably for everybody concerned, the council as well as staff because, but yes, it can be altered. And as long as the city delivers what the plan is to do, which is pedestrian safety and better circulation of that intersection.
And when and how is public comment allowed for that engineering design?
You have to talk to them, and if they want to answer.
Hello. Back to you.
There will be public comment throughout the whole design process.
Okay. So we have another chance to change that?
Right, absolutely.
Okay. All right. Let me see if I have any other questions.
You'll be allowed to make comment, yes.
And encouraged.
Yeah.
That's great. Okay. But I do want to point out that by having a second crosswalk, you have a bottleneck. You've got more people waiting, turning, less traffic flow. I think there is an impact there, and I don't think we're addressing it.
Again, that'll be taken in consideration in the final design.
Okay. To make sure. Thank you. One more thing. I got a quote on those traffic flashers that are actually embedded on crosswalks. For each crosswalk, $6,000. That's for the equipment and obviously installation, probably another six. I think that's a huge benefit, especially when you've got people, traffic coming both ways. So I'm going to go ahead and if I can add that to something that we should consider.
Who did the quote come from?
It came from, and they're in Sacramento.
We should put that in all crosswalks.
We're getting a little off-topic with lighted crosswalks.
And as we're working on projects in downtown Sonora, in the Vision Sonora Plan, these type of things will be taken into consideration. But remember, Washington Street is a Caltrans state highway. So we just can't do anything we want to do just like that. They have to be involved. Okay, next. Who's next? And thank you very much, Barbara, for doing that.
Thank you.
Hi. My name's Chet White. I'm the Director of Transportation at Sonora Union High School. All I brought was a piece of paper showing the turning radius of our 40-foot school buses, and I'll just hand that in. But as we were going through, and you said not to try to repeat some of the things that everybody else repeated, it's just, I wrote some things down. Like the sideline issue, the biggest issue at this intersection where this red car is to right here, the trees and the signage segways. Someone else mentioned this was a perfect merge lane, as it is now. Merging into an intersection full of students or tourists is a bad idea. This becomes an attractive nuisance, and I believe you mentioned that. The state says we need to be 18 to 36 inches from any problem object when we start our turn on a school bus. Add that to the 46 feet that we need to make to turn, and I try to clear that within 12 inches after we complete the turn, we're in the middle of the lane, we're far into the center lane there. So that's a huge problem. If there are any shrubs, I work at the high school. People plant trees and they grow up and sidewalks fall apart. That's just the way it happens. So I'm worried if anything's put in here, there's a problem. People standing here taking a picture of the red church, which was amazing, but they're out next to the road. Now, that's another big problem. This one is the worst one I've seen right here, that as I'm turning right, looking left, and there's people coming out. Plus, this squirt off looks like it invites left turns now, which is already a problem because people do it anyway, even though there's signage. Are we going to add a whole bunch more signage to make it clear that this isn't a four-way stop sign or a four-way crosswalk? I don't know. It's just concerns that I have. You know, there's always the what-ifs. Environmental impact report, what has to be done before that is done? Do we move dirt? Is that, I guess I don't understand that piece of it.
Okay. An environmental impact report would be required if this document, and correct me if I'm wrong, I'll let Paula continue to answer that question.
Okay.
So people throw out the environmental impact report as this concept, but really under CEQA, which is the law that governs environmental analysis of projects, that's one form of document that's created. An environmental impact report is only necessary if there's a significant environmental impact that cannot be mitigated to a less than significant impact through mitigation measures. And the council would be required to do overriding statement of considerations for why that impact should be overwritten. In this project's case, it wasn't necessary. We went through the CEQA checklist and analyzed all the issue areas required under CEQA, and none of the issue areas raised to the level of a significant impact without mitigation, bringing it down to less than significant. So an environmental impact report was not necessary, and that's why we submitted the mitigated negative declaration for your consideration tonight. The timing of when one is done is any time a project is considered by the city. In this case, the funding of this project triggered the environmental analysis to be done.
Okay. So I guess the question I had is, knowing that this used to be a gas station, if there's any dirt movement in this section of roadway, and they find that there's contaminants, then that, does that now cause a problem? Or when there was the old Coca-Cola bottling viewer over here where the parking garage is? Or has that already been mitigated once the construction was done on the parking lot? Because if there is something moved, there's going to be something underneath there. What are we going to find then is a report necessary?
Right. So there's.
Just curious.
So there are already laws and regulations in place that govern many of those things. For instance, OSHA talks about worker safety. So anytime you're dealing with part of the environment that has impacts to the workers, those laws are in existence. We don't have to restate each and every law in the environmental analysis. Because the contractors would have to abide by them anyway. We do have mitigation measures for the disturbance of the ground. If something is found that hasn't already been disturbed, what we need to do and what those mitigation measures would be in that case. Part of this project is analyzed because it is an existing intersection. It is already disturbed areas. It's paved from right-of-way line to right-of-way line. So those things will be taken into consideration.
Okay. I just figured that was encapsulated, but I thought I'd ask. So I guess that's it, because it sounds like I'm out of time. But somebody mentioned crosswalks, and I think I heard them mention that it was out of the realm of the scope of this project? Or did I hear that right?
No.
Okay.
It's not correct, but.
Okay. Sorry then, because I thought that was a fantastic idea as part of the project. That's what downtown Sonora is lacking, because we have the beautiful.
These crosswalks?
Well, we have the beautiful ambient lighting, but poor lighting on the crosswalks. They're always in the wrong spot. And everybody wears black or gray at nighttime now. So, thank you.
I have a question for Chet before he goes. So the Kinley Horn plan was, mentioned a 40-foot bus and as a concept, for their concept plan. How long is your longest bus?
40 foot.
Okay.
And again, I have the turning radius figures for those buses, just for Thomas-Bilt buses, not for International or the others, but they're probably similar. And, but again, are they figuring the relief points that we use for guidelines when we're making safe turns? Or are they going from point zero? And that could be a problem. So that's what I had. Thank you.
Thank you for bringing this information.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Members of the City Council. Sharon Maravich from the Twalma Heritage Committee, we are the ones who commented on the mitigated negative declaration and said that we felt it was an inappropriate document for you to be considering relative to this project. The fact that a mitigated negative deck would even be prepared indicates that this project is subject to CEQA. The city's own cultural resources survey made a determination that our downtown is eligible not only for the National Register of Historic Places, but the California Register as well. And so what we're saying is, we would like to see an environmental impact report done on the entire Vision Sonora program, not only to look at how this might adversely affect the historic nature of our downtown. It may or may not. We don't know that. But the kind of projects that are listed in the Vision Sonora Project Program are the same sort of kind of things that you look at in your general plan. When you prepared your general plan, you did an environmental impact report on it. Things that are not only concern to us relative to the ambience and the authentic nature, the, it doesn't get any more authentic than downtown Sonora, is the traffic, circulation and parking. What is going to happen to our downtown when the Vision Sonora Plan suggests that one block of Lion Street between Stewart and Shepherd is closed? What is going to happen to our downtown when the parking lot that's next to the furniture store is proposed to be closed and made into a plaza? What is going to be the impact on the historic nature of our downtown, or downtown in general, with the parking lot that has a farmer's market on it being completely changed into a plaza and a public space? And the stretch of Stewart Street next to the farmer's market being totally closed to traffic? Never, it is not partially half-open, half-close. It is nothing. So we feel that there are major, major projects in the Vision Sonora Plan that need to be looked at in a comprehensive overall manner, and only an environmental impact report can do that. We believe that doing a mitigated negative declaration, as has been prepared by your staff, with all due respect to your staff, is in fact piecemealing this project. The Vision Sonora Plan is huge, and it should be looked at just as you looked at your general plan with an environmental impact report. We do not want downtown Sonora to not be able to be listed on the National Register of Historic Places or the California Register if in fact that's what the owners of the properties want. This is a tremendous honor for a small town, or any town, but we have it. It's right here. So we're very concerned that the piecemealing of the Vision Sonora Plan is inappropriate and that the entire thing should be looked at with an environmental impact report, just as you did with your general plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have a question for Mrs. Maravich, actually.
Oh, question?
Yes.
Oh.
Yep.
Don't ever ask me questions. They can't wait till I quit speaking.
I'm sorry.
Bonjour.
Back to the line, line light, then. On this particular project, getting the blue sky and environmental impact for the entire thing, in what way would this negatively affect the historic nature of this corner or these buildings and this particular section of Washington Street?
This particular section of Washington Street is one of the most significant sections we have. It has St. James Episcopal Church, which has been there since 1859. It has overlooked the downtown for all those years. And it's a clear view from the south looking north, and you see this magnificent church building that has been taken care of so well over the years by the congregation. And to have sticking off to the side, sort of, I'm calling it a sideshow. I have never particularly liked this project. The red church does not need any more distractions from it. And also, too, to create a public area with benches and I don't know what else, basically in a street that is passed by 16,000 vehicles in a 24-hour period, I do not see this as an inviting situation. Perhaps that kind of amenities, as it is called, could be placed somewhere else in a less conspicuous location and not detract not only from the red church, but from people's calm and ability to transact a conversation when trucks and cars and motorcycles and you name it are going by at the rate of 16,000 in a 24-hour period.
Are there any parts of Vision Sonora as it's currently envisioned that you do support?
There are some things in there that I think are very worthy, that would not disrupt or in any way detract from the historicity of our downtown, nor do I think would jeopardize listing on the National Register of Historic Places or the California Register of Historic Places. Returning street trees, you can do that very easily from Stockton Street South because you don't have to deal with Caltrans. Doing it from Stockton Street North, a little more problematic. The benches you've done, the garbage cans, the simple little additions that do not just jump out at you. So much, some of the plans include filling in parking places on Washington Street to create either parklets or in addition to restaurant seating. Those are just not something that you expect to see in a goal rush town. You don't see it in Columbia. You don't see it in some of the other towns that have taken great efforts to preserve their authenticity.
Okay. So we're talking about this intersection. Sharon, I do have a question for you. Back in 1985, there was a revitalization plan.
Yes.
That was created. In that plan, at that time, this intersection at Snell and Elkin and Washington Street, a recommendation was to revise the intersection.
a recommendation was to revise the intersection and to do some entry planting. So, again, it seems like at one point in time, this intersection was a problem, still is a problem, and this is just a concept for a plan. It could totally change to be less restrictive. Do you agree with that?
To paraphrase a speaker from a previous meeting relative to the closure of Wannabeur Street, it's been in your general plan for over 30 years, and it hasn't happened. There's great opposition to it. And I think that the opposition to, I mean, that was never implemented. That plan is 30 years old, was never implemented. I don't have a reason for why it wasn't, except maybe it wasn't popular.
Okay, thank you.
Elena Linehan, a downtown property owner, and I've worked on downtown revitalization in three cities. I urge the City Council to reject the negative, sorry, the mitigated negative declaration for the Red Church intersection. The city hasn't done the preliminary work it takes to take a project, sorry, the city hasn't done the preliminary work to take on a project of this scale. This project has significant potential impacts and requires further study in seven key areas. One, aesthetics. The mitigated negative declaration shows a less-than-significant impact. Signage for a new business gets more review than this project has. The city should go through the standard procedures and really assess what the impact of this project will be. Two, air quality. The mitigated negative declaration shows a less-than-significant impact. The traffic snarl caused by these changes will have a profound effect on the air quality and warrants further study before proceeding. Three, cultural resources. This project degrades the historic look of the downtown and could have an impact. This should be discussed further. Four, soils, sorry, geology and soils. The mitigated negative declaration does not discuss the abandoned mines below the intersection. The report is written as if there was no knowledge of previous cave-ins that there that impact traffic. It's irresponsible for the city to claim less-than-significant impact when the report shows no discussion of this. Five, greenhouse, greenhouse gas emissions. The traffic snarl created by the proposed changes to this intersection will increase greenhouse gas emissions, and the negative declaration only gives lip service to this fact. Six, public service. Schools were not informed of the proposed changes and were not included in the discussion. How can the city claim no impact for schools when they are not asked for their input? Our schools will be severely impacted by this project. Seven, traffic. Dale Batchelor has a presentation with a visual examination of how this intersection works. It's not difficult to project the damage caused by the proposed project, and yet, the city claims no impact or less-than-significant impact in the negative, in the mitigated negative declaration. How can that be when this project has not been reviewed by the Parking and Traffic Commission or the City Safety Committee? Further, the building owners have not been included in the discussion. The business owners have not been included in the discussion. A year and a half ago, when this project was discussed by the City Council on May 16, 2016, I pointed that out to you. And in a year and a half, no outreach has been done to those groups, or the schools, or the residents that drive down Snell Street every day. The proposed plan does not address the safety issue at the Red Church intersection. That is, the vehicle and pedestrian collisions at the Elkin Street crosswalk. These proposed changes do not do anything to correct that. It only places a park on the opposite side of the street. It appears that this project will take away the one part of the intersection that seems to work well. Connie Williams says this project is not being rushed. But here we are, with your funders demanding a proper environmental paperwork submitted by November 1st. That preliminary work has not been done, so your solution is to declare no impact at all. You're in a pickle. What choices do the city have? If the council doesn't accept this flawed report, then you lose the grant. This is the dog-eat-my-own-homework approach to city planning. I reminded of the kid who tries to give a book report without reading the book. I'll conclude by restating what I said when this project was discussed on May 16 of 2016. Once you accept this grant, the deliverables are locked in. If your grant funds bullbounce and new crosswalks, you have to build them. We see that at the Washington-Stockton Street intersection, where the grant work will only determine whether we lose parking spaces on Washington Street or Stockton Street, and not whether the design is valid, or even if that placement of a bus terminal is best for Sonora.
Thirty seconds, Elena.
Thank you. This action should be postponed until the city is assured that the Red Church intersection project is sound with adequate study of the impact to traffic, parking, and safety. And also for the public, city departments, businesses in the communities to have a say in what's proposed. Far, far better to wait for the next, far, far better to wait for the next grant cycle than to propose a project that the community cannot support. Thank you.
Just so the public is aware... Just so the public is aware, based upon Ms. Linehan's comments, we did receive a comment from the Red Church, from Sonora Union High School, and from Ray Seuss. So, we did, the city did reach out to the different entities. So just to let you know. Okay, we have another, we have another person coming up to comment?
Mm-hmm.
Yes. Yes, come ahead.
I'm Stephanie Seuss.
Yes, you are.
Thank you, everyone. We've been following this in the paper. Have we been contacted directly? No. And I, you know, as a business owner, my husband, I don't know if we've missed something in the mail, but thank you, Alex, for keeping us up to date. So, we're property owners at 144 North Washington Street, and, which is right next to Dorothy's Christmas. We have three off-street parking spaces. We bought that property over 20 years ago for that very reason, to make sure our clients had ability to come downtown and park. I couldn't agree more with the engineers, which, surprise! But I'm, I'm just kind of stymied by this whole thing. I appreciate that it's a conceptual plan. I appreciate that you're up against a deadline for a $722,000 grant. Been there, done that. But I, I don't understand, it almost feels now that you're approving a conceptual mitigated negative declaration. Because, again, hearing how this process works, once you start down that path and you start into the design of $78,000, $76,000, you're going to get it approved, or, you know, they're going to get to some point. And, and the bus has kind of left the station here, because when the homeowner, when the, when the property owners come in and we say, "This is going to impact the access to our property." We're going to have people coming in or pulling out at kind of this swing angle. And I, again, I know this as conceptual, but this is all we have to go on. I've spent over 35 years in, in land use and development and working under CEQA and NEPA, and this seems rushed. And I don't, again, understand how you can go forward approving this, because again, if yours telling me that changes can come later on, then what are, what are we approving tonight? When Ms. Maravich talked about piecemealing, same thing has gone through my head, how you start at one end of South Washington and you move up. There's a bigger picture here. I wouldn't, again, money's tough to come by, but I think this is really rushing this. And, again, as a property owner, this is going to have a huge impact on our project, on our property, on our customer service. The biggest thing I constantly hear about downtown Sonora is there's no available parking. We provide parking, and it's going to take away some of that ability. Now, again, if this is going to be redesigned, and you've already kind of gone down that $76,000, you are going to have to pay it back. That's my assumption. Been there, done that. But when, you know, you need to have something a little more concrete for us to act on as far as this mitigated negative declaration. My big gripe. Let me make sure I've got everything written down here. Yep, that's it.
In, in our document, it says conceptual plan would allow for parking spaces to be relocated to other portion of the roadway. But as I understood it, for your property, you maintain all the access and the three places?
Yes. It's on our property.
Right. That's private. I mean, that's...
That's correct.
...remain accessible, and that's for you.
Well, again, looking at this drawing, now we're backing off kind of at a sweep, across the sidewalk, and across another little driveway with a park on one side and perhaps another one on another side. That's, that's kind of a lot going on there, especially for some of our clients, let alone me. Ask Billy Hennington, I took out two cars in one parking lot, but that's a whole nother story. But we have unfettered access right now. We could come in and off the, off the highway. And this, we're going right into a four-lane, I don't even know what to call it. We're, we're going into this major intersection with four crosswalks, right? This is not easy. And it would have been nice to have a little more notification. But again, thank you, Alex, for writing the article. He didn't call me.
Thank you.
Okay, next.
Yes, that's my wife.
All right.
I don't talk like that. Hey, Mark. Mark's about the only guy that can show up at our office and he never has to worry about parking, because he just walks across the street. But to maybe bring it into the real world, we've got probably 2,000 seniors that we insure for Medicare supplements. That means those people are over 65 years old, okay? Parking, and I see a fellow competitor and friend back there who is in a worse situation than me, but getting it in on our driveway is tough. You're not only making it hard for those people that come to see us, and the reason they come to see us is because we have parking. Some of our seniors, some of our seniors can't walk up the street from the parking lots, okay? The other thing you're doing is, it's like Dorothy's Christmas store, I guess they're closed, so let's eliminate the parking in front of their place, right? And then let's go down to Sonora Insurance, is that right? And you guys lose maybe three spots?
The only three.
Yeah. What are you doing to us? Do you want some more antique stores downtown, and you want some professionals downtown? We've been down there 25 years, okay? This can seriously impact our clientele. And this, you know, what Jerry has had to say, Sharon and the other folks, terrific. I wish you would listen to it. I don't know much, much about the specifics, but it doesn't sound like much was put into this. It's like, let's fix this, and let's not worry about the other problems. There's a lot of people losing parking. Parking takes dollars out of my pocket. And remember that you want us businesses to stay there, I think. Thank you.
So, before I take the next comment, Mr. Seuss, in the negative declaration, on page 36, it, the, under the less-than-significant issue to do with parking, there's, it says in here that parking would be impacted through the removal of a few spaces during the reconfiguration of the intersection. The conceptual plan would allow for the parking spaces to be relocated to another portion of the roadway, thereby maintaining the same level of parking. So the street parking, the street parking, and this is, this is true for Sonora Insurance, if you look at the conceptual plan, there's still parking spaces out there. So I would implore you to look at that.
Well, I'm talking about, one, the three spots on my land, okay? That people, and Mark, you're willing to take a car, borrow them, I don't want mine, back out of my driveway, of our driveway now, and see how difficult it is. Then put this thing in, and we're going to have a bunch of old, older folks, I put myself in that category now, okay? That are going to drive over your park, okay, backing out. And, you know, don't tell us you're going to give us a parking lot over here when we need it here, okay? Sonora Insurance wants their customers to park in front of their business, okay? When you're dealing with somebody in their 80s that's on a walker, every foot matters, okay? So, you haven't solved my problem at all here. You've made it more difficult for my clients to get in and out of my office.
And I can, I can understand that...
Yeah.
...from your perspective. But I just wanted to make sure that the public understood that on the conceptual plan, there are still parking places.
Where are they?
I can't see them. Now, where?
Could you get up and show us?
Yeah.
Where are they?
Show us the new one. Those are the parking places.
And this is, this is my...
Right here.
Those exist already.
That's what, that's right.
So you're just telling, we're going to eliminate all of these?
These are not parking spaces. That's the entrance to the garage. They put those in. They're wrong. They don't...
What's a garage? I put two extra parking spaces.
And what about the floor that I'm using? Where are the doors?
Remember, this, this is not to scale, and it...
No.
...is conceptual plan, so...
My building is...
But again, again, folks...
Real hard to get in and out. Is this a new restaurant we're going to have?
We don't know.
No, because they're not a restaurant now.
Excuse me. So, so, so I'm trying really hard to help educate everybody that...
Sure.
...remember, this is a conceptual plan. We're not approving a plan tonight. We're only approving a document to move forward to get to a final plan.
Yeah. Well, I urge that you reconsider that.
Okay. Thank you. Next.
Hi, I'm Mary Lynn Ashburn. I'm here representing the, the Red Church. We, according to this, the narrowing of Snell is a big concern to us. We have no access on the Washington Street side of our church. The only entrance areas are on the Snell side. If the street is narrowed, and it appears in all of the, the concepts that that would have to be, there's no parking places at our front, side door. That's our only ADA access to the church. We don't have a real parking lot. We utilize the city parking lot on Wykoff. So we would be severely limiting our senior citizens from being able to get into the church itself. So, we have great concern with that, and the emergency vehicles going down Snell frequently. There, with any narrowing at all, I, it's hard to see where you would be able to pull over to allow an emergency vehicle to go by. It's already extremely narrow. And we have great concerns with adding another crosswalk, because we already experienced a lot of the accidents that happened there. And we believe that adding yet one more, along with the bottlenecking on Washington, will create more stop-and-go traffic directly in front of the door, and will create more likelihood for cars to impact pedestrians.
Is it possible to ask a question?
Just wait. Just wait a moment.
Okay. Looking at it for what we have, it looks like it doesn't go very far down Snell at all. all. It stops essentially at the point where the opening in their rock wall is. Is that correct? So it doesn't affect any of the Red Church West Side parking then?
No, it's more at the corner location.
Okay.
Good evening. Gary Linehan, husband of one of the previous speakers. I just wanted to clarify a statement that was made earlier. Comments in the document you have are, were received from the Red Church, Sonora High, and Seuss Insurance, but it was not because of outreach from the city. It was because my wife spent hours and hours alerting people about what's going on. So.
Thank you for the comments.
My name's Patrick Eaton and I'm a business, I'm sorry, a property owner here on Washington Street. And I was appreciative that I got a plaque from you thanking us for the aesthetics that we made, the upgrades we made to the building that looked like now we want to hide them with trees. And I know you say conceptually there's parking, but there's only three parking spaces there. And if they're filled with trees and benches, I don't know where they could possibly be relocated to. But those are the, the only spots that we have for clients to park easily to in front of the building. And then my other concerns are, we've had to remove trees from the property that have encroached on old sewer lines and those type of things and had, had to spend a lot of money to, to make improvements there. And I'm concerned with what the, these new trees could do and as well as where the maintenance and upkeep is going to come from because this is a one-time grant, I would understand. And then who's going to be responsible for the financing of keeping it updated afterwards?
Okay.
That's all I had.
All right. Oh, I do have a question for you. Your clients, when all those parking spaces are full, do they use the city parking garage?
We haven't surveyed all of them to see what they do. And I know that sometimes people will say that they didn't come in because they couldn't find parking.
Okay.
So eliminating it could make that just more difficult.
And also want to make sure that you know, that your client, that you and your clients know that the, off of Green Street, there's on the third floor of the parking deck, that is all open and free parking.
Right. Like Ray, we do have some aging clients that don't typically like doing the three flights of stairs.
Sure. But the main floor may have some parking spaces available. So I just want to make sure everybody knows where, where there's more parking available up in that area. Okay? Thank you. All right. Anyone else? Yes, Jim?
My name is Jim Davis. I've been up here a few times before. I'm also a business owner down on Stockton Road. And I was very concerned here last year about this project being on Stockton Road, which we're not talking much about today. But I can understand about the property owners here and where people park their cars. They want to park at the easiest possible spot and it's in front of their business. It was just like when I was down there at Stan and Jim's Body Shop. Everybody that needed an estimate parked right in front of the door. And it was easy for them. They got out, the office was there. I feel sorry for these property owners. If you go ahead with this and shut them off the way you're doing by choking this street down, that is a redundant idea. And I'll tell you something else. We got to park right over here and go around this corner all the time. The Ford Museum is right here. You got a couple of tables here, chairs. I drive by there, there's trees in there. Nobody ever sits there. I looked at it again today. There's an inch of leaves on all the tables, all the chairs. That indicates to me not even the homeless want to sit there. And as far as you coming up here and cutting this off here, what you're going to do with this, the buses and everything, I'm wondering what's next? If this goes ahead, are we going to put a red light here in front of the Red Church? That's a possibility with Caltrans. You do, you change this around and they're going to say, we need a red light up here to stop cars. And you even said yourself that that's the busiest intersection in Sonora. Well, you should go up there on Greenly and Mona Way and see how busy it is there. We've got five lanes going each way and it's still overloaded. And if you choke this down, you're going to do nothing but back up more traffic all the way to the gas station towards Columbia. Pick Chevron Service to high school, I go past there every day. And this configuration is the worst I ever heard of. It totally upsets me. And I want to know something else. This EPA report that you're talking about, who's going to pay that upfront to have that done?
Who's going to pay for what EPA report?
If this goes ahead, I believe they're going to have to have an EPA report on the impact to the city, to business owners and everything else. Weren't you talking about that earlier?
No, NEPA, NEPA will not apply to this project. There's no federal funds involved.
No. The, the impacts are, have been scrutinized in this report.
Okay. Well, what if that's okay and we got the money and they say that we need an EPA report done on that intersection, Caltrans or whoever?
There are no federal monies in it, therefore the, in NEPA, which would be EPA, the federal regulations do not apply.
Well, I was just worried about that $200,000 that the city sold those bonds to the other city from PG&E for the underground work, if that's where that money was going to go, which I know, I think myself that this whole thing really isn't about this intersection. It's about a money grab and it rather sickens me. So that's where it's at. That's my views on it.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other comments before I close the public comment period?
When can we ask a question?
You may ask your question right now.
We've been through a couple of grant cycles. Sorry? Can you have some?
Barbara Dressler, we've been through a couple of grant cycles already on this. Do I understand that, where we didn't meet deadlines? Wouldn't it?
No, no. No, that's not correct.
Okay.
We met all the deadlines.
Okay. I understood that there were steps along the way and it wasn't part of this grant cycle, that they had previous grants that we did not make a deadline for. Is that correct?
No.
Okay.
We have never not made a deadline for any of the grant applications.
Okay. My question to you is, why don't we pass on this grant if we can't look at what we're actually granting before we go ahead with a vote like this? Why commit ourselves to something that we don't know what we're committing to?
The only, the only thing that you're committing to, that we would be committing to if the council approves this is the opportunity to move forward, to come up with a final design, which with public input. So again, we try to be very clear that what you see is a conceptual drawing that was done by the people who created this Vision Sonora Plan. It doesn't, it's a concept of what could be done, but what will be done will be based upon the final design. It's kind of like when the, what's in this plan for the bathrooms on Stewart Street, when there's a concept in here. But the Vision Sonora Design Committee, when they started working on that concept, that wasn't what, what they felt and the community felt was the right concept for a bathroom on Stewart Street. So the final design that came out of that is totally different than what you see in this, in this Vision Sonora.
But you are committing today to do something on this intersection. Is that correct?
Something.
So at this point, you will do something on that intersection with this vote tonight?
From a, from, for safety and.
Unless you can't come up with something that the community will accept and that you listen to the community. Is that correct?
All of the meetings are public, so yes.
Thank you. All right.
I'll have a question and I think it will perhaps clarify some things, and that is.
Oh, wait a minute. Hold on. Was that, was your question addressed to Barbara or to staff?
It can go either way.
Go ahead.
Okay, then we'll hold off on that. Go ahead.
Well, this is one of the reasons I talked to you before the meeting was because a lot of this, in my opinion, should have been discussed during public comment because people want the opportunity to talk about what this looks like and how they feel about this. And that's one of my criticisms is that you don't elicit a lot of how the public feels about this and then you want to cram something down their throat at the last minute. And that does not go over well. And this should be public comment and instead we're getting a lecture. And I don't really like that either. You should be listening to what people have to say. And there should have been an opportunity to have way more discussion about this instead of at the last minute. So I've been listening to this for what, one or two years now, and I've heard Caltrans contribute to the conversation. And I know I've been yapping for a couple of years because this is a very unsafe place in downtown Sonora. And I'm concerned about, we have an older population and I've fallen twice. I've broken two pairs of glasses because our sidewalks are so crappy. And we've had people fall, they've had to go to the hospital. We had someone hit on Elkin that I believe ended up getting lifelighted out. I mean, it is not safe there. So we have to do something. And I don't like this, putting out a conceptual design as if that's the real thing and then everybody gets all riled up and then we have to hear at least five times tonight that this was only a conceptual plan. So, but this is a really good project in many ways because we need to do something about this intersection and our pedestrian safety. And this is the first time where we've met some criteria that we can actually get some money. And I hate to send money back when they've said, hey, if you just do these things, we'll be happy to help you with this project because I don't know where we'll ever get 700 and some thousand dollars to try to fix this. But we need to do it wisely.
Thank you. Okay, any other, hold one second. Any other public comment? Okay. Oh, excuse me, we have a gentleman coming up that wants to have an opportunity to speak.
Just a comment that, can we just, I just, I'm against it. Can you write that down as a comment? Thank you.
Thank you.
Just going to go over one more thing. You know, the attorney.
Do you have a question?
Yes.
Yes, speak to us.
The attorney said earlier that if you do a major change, you might have to do another mitigated, whatever that is. But you're, you're telling us that we don't know what it's going to be. So it's obviously going to be a major change if you don't know what it's going to be right now.
Paula, would you explain what a major change would be?
So as the project final design is developed, the issue areas that have been analyzed in the document itself, the new design would be compared to the impacts that have been already analyzed. And as long as those issue areas in that analysis is at the same level or less than the document that is before you will cover it. It's only if there is something that is added to the design that is outside the realm of environmental impacts that were considered, would you have to reanalyze that? And then it would be a focused analysis on that issue area in particular.
Okay.
That you could look at.
Can you give me an example?
If, if you didn't do the island, if you took the bump out.
Hold on. Go ahead.
I really don't want to speculate on that, to be honest, because it would take looking at what was there. For instance, to throw out something that would look different is if they came in and decided that they were going to add lanes to Washington Street, then the capacity of Washington Street would be changed and the traffic analysis would no longer be valid.
Okay.
If, if for instance, you took out the island and didn't put that bump out in.
Yeah, I don't know. Can't, can't comment because we don't know.
So, okay. I just want to be sure. You're voting on something, you have no clue what's going to happen.
Yeah, okay. All right. Any other public comment? All right. If not, then I'm going to bring it back to the council for their discussion. Does anyone want to start?
I'll start, but I would, I may end up with some additional questions after I hear the brilliant people up here. So my, my biggest question is, what committee or group will be finalizing the final design? And how much impact will the, those will be public meetings? Or the question is, will those be public meetings? And then the public, if it's public, obviously can attend. And how much impact will they be able to have on, on different ideas and different concepts, whether a bulb out's too big or should be eliminated entirely, that type of thing? I don't know. See, I think Mrs. Dowd made a wonderful point and that we do need to do something here. I believe that most people in the room actually agree with that. They just disagree in general with the plan as it's conceptualized. And this is an opportunity to improve the public safety of this particular intersection. But if the public's going to end up being excluded from the process, which I think is what they fear, then I'll be a little less cheery about the question. So, was I clear? Sometimes I'm not.
So I can tell you this, it will have public comment, I mean, Tim might, might comment from the city administrator perspective, but I know that on the Stockton/Washington RFP that we are going out with, went out, not one proposal, going back in on, we have a minimum of three public meetings set up in there for the consultant to meet with the public and receive comments as the plan moves forward. I can imagine why you would do less for this one. And so the consultant will hold public meetings as they work through the plan. The public will be provided the opportunity to comment in the design as it comes, as it goes forward.
So it's the consultant who will finalize the, the design of this as well?
Correct, because they're an engineering.
And that will be the people who did the prior one?
No, we don't know yet.
Whoever's the one that looks better?
They'll go out for, with a request for proposal. And then engineer, qualified engineering firm, engineering firms will be the ones that provide the proposals to the city. They'll select one of the proposals, it'll go before you guys for approval, and then we'll move forward with the approved consultant.
Thank you.
But yes, there definitely will be public involvement.
Any questions, comments?
Well, this is a tough one. I don't think, from the three years or so that I've sat on the council just up to this point, that I've had an issue that's had so much negative comments and very little positive comments. And I'm not sure whether to put Carol in a positive or negative. She's kind of borderline. A couple of things that I noted, there were some comments about sidewalks and important addition that, and the old folks, and I'll include myself in that because I fell downtown the other day too. This plan will upgrade the sidewalks in that particular area. So that's going to be an improvement, the sidewalks at least. And that's a good positive, I think. And the Caltrans, when they get involved in approving this, because it's going to need Caltrans. need Caltrans approval, they'll be part of the process. But if there's something they don't like, they're the big kahuna in the, in the room here, they'll be changed to their, their needs. But I can tell you that Caltrans is more specifically concerned with pedestrian safety and vehicle safety. That's their two top priorities, changing anything in regards to Washington Street. We've had that discussion with them previously, talking about our existing crosswalks on Washington Street. So, I'm convinced, and I use this intersection three, four, five, maybe six times a day because I live in an area just behind the high school and I've got to use Snell to get onto Washington. And I can tell you that the current configuration is not an ideal situation. It is dangerous. And I've got some close calls there. I'm not imitating anything, but I've got some close calls there too. Ray Sues, my concern was your loss of parking, if that was gonna be a part of this plan. From what I can see and what I've been told, that's your property, you can have as many spaces as you can squeeze on there, and I guess three is the number that you can get on there. I'm not sure that it's going to hinder, hinder anybody getting into your property with the configuration as opposed to the existing configuration. It's tough to get into your property, if it is, there's no doubt about it.
I'd invite you to practice.
No, I, yeah.
Set up going forward.
No, I drive by there every day and I see what's going on, believe me, yeah. But I just wanted to make sure you can maintain, at least maintain your three parking spaces there on your property. The Red Church, concerned about the parking there on Snell. It's dangerous right now. I don't know how many times I've turned from Washington onto Snell and there have been people getting out of their cars, they're parked right there in the first couple of parking spaces. And usually they're handicapped and it's already a dangerous situation there. I don't, if there's any way we can improve that, I would try to get that included in the plan because, yeah, I think you're, you're right, that is, that is dangerous there. We had two engineers speaking against the project, we have one engineer that designed the conceptual plan, so at this point it's two engineers, one engineer, I guess, on the, the conceptual plan. I do agree that that additional crosswalk is more, in my opinion, looking at it right now is more dangerous than not having the crosswalk there at all. So, we'll see how that goes if this gets passed during the, another, another engineering analysis. And you know, I guess we can't do this, but when we send in an RFP for the engineering, do we have to send it to Horn also?
Yeah, you have to do it for Horn to see if anybody has a right to submit proposals.
You know, I almost, I'd like a third party really to take a look at that and see if they're...
When we evaluate the proposals, we'll go through and then we'll have an opportunity to go with the committee's form and then it'll be a selection priority.
So, they gotta be a part of the process?
They'll be part of the process, not necessarily that they want to...
Yeah.
They might want to.
I share a lot of your concerns, George. There's a lot of, lots been said tonight. One, Sharon mentioned that it's one of her least likely, least favorite Vision Sonora projects. Well, it's my least favorite one as well. It's, we have so many historical assets right at that corner. I mean, the Red Church is almost the thing that people actually look at as a landmark for Sonora above anything else. I'm concerned about, I'm concerned about the bump out, the large bump out, some people call it an island. The, the concept plan that we have on the, on the front of our, our packet here shows, if I'm not mistaken, it shows Ray and Stephanie Sues' driveway coming out to where it actually says "stop" on the, on the map there, which basically puts it right at the intersection, making it kind of a five-star intersection for those people trying to back out of a parking spot. That's, I just, that's, that's not a concept I would like to see. I don't like the process, to be honest with you. I don't like the process. Mostly the other process is you have a plan, you have the environmental impact, it kind of comes at the same time. This, for the reasons for the new SB 1 bill, or however they decided up in Sacramento, that we do the environmental separately first without really coming up with, with an actual lease preliminary plan. And that makes me not want to really agree with it. However, Carol makes very good points in the fact that we could get, at least get some money for something to improve traffic safety. The idea that you slow down traffic so that people, and put bulbs out, bulb outs out there so people can actually see pedestrians is a valid one. But it's the main north-south road that goes through the county. And Jerry's right, I don't agree with you on that, Jerry, though, when you say that we should wait until the north-south connector is finished before we do anything with Vision Sonora, I don't agree with that. However, I don't think Vision Sonora will be successful until that is built, the north-south connector is built. That's 24 years away. So, there's, there's a lot of cart before the horse type of, of things with this. I asked at the very outset whether we could spend money, if the, if we could pass this and still not be able to, and still not either have nothing or have something different. And I think the answer I got was, I thought the answer I got was, well, we can still not do something. And then I kind of got the impression that that maybe wasn't quite the answer, but the answer is that we could do something different and still be able to do that. I would support doing something different to keep the money, but I'm not, certainly not in favor of, of the way, if we end up doing the conceptual project that I see up there on the wall that we have in here, Cal, is that ironic or what? The, and Jim Davis said it, but I had already thought of it, that's crying for a, a traffic light. And that's the last thing I want in that intersection, in front of all those historical assets. So, I don't know where to go here, to be honest with you, I really don't. I, I wanted to have some process go forward so that we have better traffic safety, or better pedestrian safety. Because you know, I'm up here at the fire museum and I can see and it is dangerous, very dangerous. I've almost gotten hit at the lower, at the, the one, the sidewalk across from the parking garage. And there are people flying up, up, up north on Washington Street, we gotta do something about that somehow. I've been there when, when the kids are out from the high school, I've seen the buses come down. You know, I like the concept of being able to come at, off of Snow Street at an angle, a better angle so you can look up. But I know the buses, with the buses, I have concern about the buses, meaning it'll make such a, a large hump, so it's all problematic. So, I don't know where to go.
That hump can be reduced appreciably.
Well, yeah.
Without dramatically changing the plan at all.
Yeah. And that's possible, so.
So, just to remind the council, as it goes through the process with preliminary design and final design and the public participation, it'll ultimately come back to the council for approval before it goes out for, to solicit construction. So, you will have a chance to weigh in at several opportunities for the input that you just expressed.
So, again, I guess I'll ask the question then, if we go through and approve the mitigated naked declaration and in the end, we decide that whatever we come up with is not gonna work, are we on, and have to refuse the grant? And I understand what you said about refusing a grant because we're not likely gonna get another one if we do, or it's gonna be a long time down the road. But if we end up doing zero, what happens then? And how much are we liable for? Because, because that's become a question whether, whether tonight is really a jump-off point or not.
So, the item on your agenda tonight is the environmental impacts in the document. That's all you're certifying. You're not adopting a plan, you're not approving a plan, you're not agreeing tonight with the financing of the plan. The grant application that would be designed for the project is a separate item. And moving forward into that grant, this is a step in that grant process. The monies that you would receive from that grant process to do the design work, that would then be what you're on the hook to move forward with or payback if you decide not to do it.
So, the question I have is, so we need to, to, we need to do this, approve the mitigated naked declaration to move forward with any kind of plan?
Yes. For this grant. Under the active transportation program, your environmental document has to be completed before they will authorize the funding for preliminary engineering and design. So, we have to complete the CEQA document, which is why it's before you tonight. So that you can, then we can go in and request the funds, which will happen in December after it's approved tonight, to move forward with preliminary engineering and design. And I would assume, as I said earlier, when you're through with your preliminary engineering and design, if you have spent the money and then the city says, "Well, we're not doing anything," that's gonna be an issue. But I can absolutely say, if the project improves the circulation and the pedestrian safety in that intersection as part of that final design, because that's what we're agreeing to under that plan, under the program, then you have met the requirements and then you move on once, because Caltrans is gonna be part of this, they have to approve it as well. And then you go into your construction funding.
So, when, so, let me finish. So, when, when does, assuming we pass this tonight, sign the documents, we're on our way, when does the discussion for the actual plan begin? Do we wait for a preliminary plan by someone's designing that to, to come up first?
Absolutely. So, it'll be a preliminary, so the first thing that will happen is the RFP would be released, we would repair, sorry for the acronym. The request for proposal would be released once we get authorization from the CTC to move forward and we have our funding. So, the $76,000 that's available, we would release the RFP and we'd solicit proposals from qualified engineers. Then the proposals come in, they're analyzed for qualification, which is the requirement of Caltrans, and then you look at the funding, what they're requesting, you prioritize who's gonna get, you know, who you would like to solicit the proposal from, they set qualifications. Then that comes before the council, once that consultant is, has a recommendation that you select, you know, the committee selects a consultant, there'll be a proof that's formed to select the consultant. And then, at that point, the consultant is hired and the consultant, then they start working on design, they have the initial public meeting to get everybody's...
So, they do have, that's where I was getting to. A scoping meeting early on for people to come and...
Right at the beginning, because they're gonna take that concept plan and they're gonna have a public meeting and everybody can come, talk about what they don't like about what's in that, that scope, the concept. And then they'll take that input and they'll start working on preliminary design, they'll work on the preliminary design, they'll have another meeting as they work through that issue, and then they'll come up with a final design, which everybody will again get to look at.
So, and the preliminary, does the preliminary design get approved by the, either the Vision Sonora Committee or the council at some point before it goes final? Or is it, wait, goes through the process and being filed?
Work through the, that process with the selected consultant for a public participation program and decision points that we need to make as we go through that process.
Okay. The point, I guess the point I'm trying to make is that, I don't feel that the concept, conceptual plan is adequate. I know a lot of, obviously a lot of people in this audience right now, and of course that's what, 43, 4,500 people live in Sonora and there's 30 people in the audience, so who knows how much, but they're, but they're here. So, you know, I, I don't know. But I have concerns, clearly. These people have concerns, I want to make sure that we do the right thing early on and so that becomes part of the plan instead of going through a whole process of doing something and find out that it's not workable for a lot of people. So, that's kind of where I'm at. And I think, and I think with, with what's been described here, having the scoping meeting early on allays a lot of my concerns. Because I agree, I wholeheartedly agree with Carol that we have the opportunity to have money to improve pedestrian safety at that intersection when you have high school kids, you have visitors, it's a bad intersection for pedestrians. We have that opportunity, we need to do something. And I just don't like that plan.
I don't think anybody likes that.
And I don't, and I, and I don't want to stop like that.
Sharon doesn't want to stop like her either.
Paula, in your opinion, if we reject this grant, what would be the likelihood of us ever getting any kind of grant money from that intersection?
I would defer that to Rochelle.
Rochelle, just your opinion.
We have Darren out in the audience too, he, I don't know, but usually, usually if you get awarded grants through a program and you reject them, you're not high on their priority list when you come back in for more. It's just kind of the way I wish. Probably a good decision at the time before the...
You've made a lot of good points and I illuminate and I'll sit there.
Okay, well, then I guess I'm the last one to speak before we, before our motion takes place. So, number one, thank you all very much for all of your comments and they're very good ones and they're ones that should be considered. In 1985, as I said earlier, it was brought to the attention of the city council that there was a problem at that intersection, a safety problem and a circulation problem. How that problem gets ultimately designed that would help with that intersection remains to be seen. When I went back and looked at this 1985 revitalization plan, believe it or not, that traffic study that was done in 1982, there were 16,000 to 17,000 vehicles that, vehicle trips that took place at that intersection. The busiest section in the 20... The busiest section in the 2012 traffic study, or the busiest area on Washington Street in the 2012 study, is between Leinsterburg and Bradford, and it's 15,971 vehicle trips. So you're still seeing a, a lot of that traffic. The only reason you don't see more of it down between, probably between Elkin and Bradford is because people turn left and go onto Stewart Street, or they wait and get down to the street by the park that you can turn on and go down Green Street. But regardless, we know, we all agree, we have a lot of traffic. After reading through all of the comments that came in, I can see by looking at this concept plan why there would be concerns. So I don't think this is the right final plan, and I think it needs to be worked on. And if in fact the council approves, moving forward with approving this mitigated negative declaration, there's still, in my opinion, a lot of work to be done. Thank you, Carol, for coming up and saying that you have no, unless you actually go out after grant money, which by the way, folks, a lot of these are your tax dollars that go to the state, that we have to go through the grant process in order to get back to utilizing your community, which is what this is all about. To, to have scored as high as we did and have a second opportunity to go after these dollars is pretty unusual that we get a second chance. So I would, I would support the approval of this mitigated negative declaration as long as it is very evident that this is not, this concept plan is not the final plan and that, that we will find with the community's involvement, the right safety and circulation design for this intersection.
Quite an information. If you change the project, your mitigated negative declaration will become inoperative. You're doing a mitigated negative declaration on that. You do many changes, your mitigated negative declaration becomes inoperative.
That didn't, didn't sound like what we had been told.
We've kept that a line.
Right. That's not quite what.
It's been very well discussed of it.
Yeah. So, anyway, okay.
Madam Mayor, I don't think we can afford not to be in this process. When we get to public input on what an engineer is going to look at this in design, I expect all of you to be there and be commenting on your concerns, if they're not addressed. So with, with that, I'll move approval of resolution number 10-30-2017-A, which incorporates the appropriate findings and adopts the mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program for the Washington Street slash Red Church pedestrian and circulation improvement project.
Okay. You have a motion? Do you have a second? You want to say that into the microphone, please?
I will second it without timidity, then.
Any other discussion by the council?
No.
Okay. Any public comment? Then I'll bring it back to the council for a vote.
Did you call for public comment? Again?
Yes, I did.
You don't need to. You don't need to.
Stephanie Seuss again, one more time. So you are approving a mitigated negative declaration based on the project description in that document. And yet, it sounds like you're saying that that is not the project as designed, as described in that document, that you're approving?
Take that as.
And I'm, I'm just asking for clarification. CEQA? I mean, I'm, again, I'm just, what is the project that this?
Approving a mitigated negative declaration based on a conceptual plan that may be subject to some change based on the CEQA standard of not, whether or not it's a substantial change.
I think that's a slippery slope, and I'll leave it at that.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to close. Now, I just said that you keep on talking about, we're going to have all this input when the new, you know, when this plan comes up. We've had a lot of input tonight, and it seems to me that you're going in totally the different direction. So I don't know about input anymore, so.
Okay.
And if this isn't the project that you're approving the mitigated negative declaration on tonight, I would urge you to vote no on the, on the motion.
Thank you.
Galen Greitz, and I, I don't think you need to worry about the fear mongering of losing the grant money. Maybe that's all it really is. If you pass on a project that conceptually is bad, that is not going to inhibit you from getting grants in the future.
Just a minor comment, and don't take this personally. How many people would you like to have at a meeting to?
To be negative?
Yeah. Because we can get them. I mean, Tina and I just talked, and she's got probably 2,000 clients, we have three.
Okay, I think.
I know no place we can get 5,000 people.
I think this is a little off.
Well, no, I think it's important, because it was almost implied that we don't have enough people here to mean anything. We represent a lot of people.
Okay, we appreciate.
Listen, Madam Mayor, I'd like to answer that. The reason why I said what I said is, is because it's, it's very hard just to gauge the feeling throughout the entire populace by who comes to the meeting. I'm not saying that, that most, I'm just, it's hard to tell for, for us. I'm not saying that, you know, just because the hand, the folks that came tonight are the only ones. I'm not saying that at all. I'm not saying, I just, it's, it's hard for us to.
Yeah. And my question was sincere. I was not being sarcastic.
Yeah. Yeah. So it's not.
Yeah. Thank you. Okay. Any other public comment? And I'm going to bring it back to the council for a vote, all in favor. Aye, opposed, abstained, passes four. Thank you all for your interest and your comments.